All this made work, first time on the agenda. So is Matt the plan? Steve?
All right, so we've got a couple of things on here. One is the scope and the timeline determination. And I think there was some conversation about next steps in the process. So I think there were some questions that you wanted answered here, that you wanted to bring up here, so we could try to answer it in an open forum. And then the next piece is the general obligation bond. And that conversation was framed around by materials that we're developing for the informational part of the process, where we're able to go out and share that information with internal stakeholders and externally with the community as a whole. So we're going to bring questions to us about scope and timeline.
Did you receive any?
I did not.
Any questions, or? All right, let's go GeoBond.
All right. So the general obligation bond, we have, I'll pull them all up here, and then we can walk through them. As we did internal focus groups, we started asking internally about people's understanding of what we're doing and where we're going. One of the first questions came up was, what have we done? And what comes next? Let's see, I'll shrink it down. You won't be able to read it, but necessarily look at it from a layout standpoint. So we've got three categories here, as you look at the bottom. Those projects that we've already completed, projects that are in progress, or future progress, projects that have the funding secured for them. So they're things that are in play as we're working out, or things that are going to kick off here in the spring. And then the large group on the right-hand side are those projects that are subject to the bond approval. And that's based on the conversations that we've had over the last few weeks. They're also then color-coded and placed on the timeline based on their progress and their scheduled progress upfront. So we've gone through and now made all the adjustments based on board decisions about where to move items on the plan. So again, our goal with each of these pages is, on a page, to show as much information as we can. This is the most text-heavy page of the four that you'll see, and that's simply because there are so many projects that we needed to get up there, so.
So can we get one pager per school?
Yes.
So that if we go to bigger schools?
Sure. You're going to go to Longfellow.
Then we'll get the Longfellow summary, that also has a county summary, that also has a city summary.
Yes, and that was one of the things that we did back at the revenue purpose statement. And it's something that Kristen is working on right now. We're using the template from the snapshots that we just finished with the schools, so we've got some updated data on there about the school itself, and then we'll be able to show what's going to happen at that school.
Then we may want to consider, so I know we'll do the small one, but we may want to consider a big one that we print in somewhere.
Yeah.
Poster.
Yep. And I think that was a conversation of, could we put them up on an easel in the front in terms of a school kind of thing?
You know, some schools get easels, so put them on their passage board, notification board, in the office, or whatever.
That chart there shows the completion dates, Steve?
Yes.
So the flags are.
All right. So then, the next page is the one that's going to have the least amount of information for you right now, because we're still working with PFM. So on here, again, we've got a little text on the right that talks about the process. Up top, in the middle, we're looking at the money that we were able to use from Pepel and Save up in the upper right-hand corner, in those two sections that are tied. Save's the big one, Pepel's the small one. And then on the left-hand side, we've got the bond. And again, PFM right now is running all the numbers for us. They're looking at the different series. Are they down to four instead of five, Craig? Is that where they're at right now?
Not necessarily, no.
So it's looking at a support series of bonds, five series of bonds. They'll have all the carrying costs with that, maybe go back and forth with that. And then we'll have the numbers that we can fill in there. The next tier down is the estimated homeowner impact, and we've got some numbers to put on there. And actually, let me just pull it up so you can see that. So again, we're going to fill in this number, this number up here, we get that from PFM. And then here, again, $197,000 of the median valuable home in Johnson County. We'll get the per-month projection on that. Got some information in here on the expiration of the current general obligation bond that falls off. Again, looking at current financial projections, be able to say, affect the levy up to. And then it'll show a net total down here for property levy increase. Some other interesting information that we think people would like to know, where do we stack up in comparison to other large districts across the state? And then this here is a table. We pulled this out, because until we get the information back to PFM, we want to make sure that the information is accurate. But it shows for the series of sales, what is the incremental increase in your property tax, and the aggregate increase in your property tax.
Do you mean the possible increase?
What's that? Possible increase, yes.
Okay.
Potential, possible, projected increase.
So my only two cents here, and I just want to get to my memo. We're going to have to think about how to talk about the legal required. We're borrowing this much, and we're authorized to increase the tax rate at this much. But then, what are the offsets that we might provide?
Right.
So we're going to have to go into, you know, two stories at the same time.
Right. You'll notice on the right-hand side here, there's going to be some carry-through, we'll get some similar information. It's over here, we can actually print this piece on the side as a flyer, so we can do that as a one pager, or we can do a back-to-back with the others that I will show you in a moment. So there's some repeat information over here. Again, trying to provide it for people perhaps in multiple different ways, so that they can see the information quickly and easily and understand the impact. Let's see.
One question on that one, Steve?
Yeah.
On that, the right-hand side there where you're at?
Over here, yeah.
Will that number, should that number be 191 or 188? And if it's 188, change it.
Oh, I think she tried to weigh out all the numbers on the page, so she's reviewing all the numbers on the page. And once we get, PFM is working on it right now, by three, four, maybe less, the under promise, over-deliver piece, we don't get it sooner than that. But as soon as they get them, we'll then go through all the numbers on here.
We actually got them the final information today.
All right.
So they have everything.
Very good.
So can we get back to the 28th year?
Going to try, that's what I asked them to do.
Yeah.
All right.
We're aligned.
All right. I'm sorry, man.
I'm just going to throw this out there. So where are the lines in terms of marketing in the school? When you said putting something up on an easel in the school?
Yeah. Again, we can inform. We can, we can inform. So for instance, let's pick a school. You're at Lincoln Elementary School, you're a couple of years out. Can we show people who walk into Lincoln, the scope of the projects? Yes, we can do that. Can we have a big red sign or sticker on there that says vote yes? We cannot do that. So we are able to talk about content, but not direction. So all we're able to do is essentially say, if the money comes in, these are the things it would do. If we get the money, here's how much it would cost, those kinds of things.
Okay. I just would want to be clear that we don't give the impression that this is a done deal.
Right.
You're getting this, you know?
Right.
Because I could see how that could be misperceived. Like, oh, these are the plans, great.
Yeah, and that's why, back on this one, we wanted to make sure that we were subject to bond approval. You need to understand, it's not just future projects, it's subject to an external funding source.
People might not read the print.
Yeah, well, and that's going to have to be part of, you know, these things can all, again, be turned into handouts, they can also be turned into slideshows. So as we look at the presumption that we're going to be asked to come speak at PTO meetings, I've already got one PTO that's got the calendar, that as we convert this into slides when we go out, we will also have talking points that go with those slides. So it may be something that you don't read, but we will be telling you as we go through that, so we make sure and reinforce that.
So since you brought that up, I'm taking out my points here.
All right, take away.
With the RPS, you also did a by-school staff review.
Yes, and we'll be going out and meeting with staff. That's why I was talking about the internal stakeholder piece. So we started with internal stakeholders. Take a look at this and tell us, what questions aren't we answering? So we've already gotten a lot of that just from that content review piece. And then now that we've got it refined, and once we get the numbers plugged in, then we'll be out at every single building, talking to the staff, and trying to answer questions for that.
I have one thing, and I'm not sure if this is political, or if this is a, I'm thinking some of this is content, but there's somewhere in these beautiful documents, or maybe this is in another document, or maybe this is a slide, I don't know, that we need to talk about what the state can control versus what our community can control. And I think we need to really put some emphasis there about the difference. We can't control what the legislators hand us, kick us, whatever.
True.
But this is something, as a community, we have rights, we have the ability to make this decision for ourselves.
Correct.
And so I think somewhere in here, we need to bring that up.
I know that story.
That needs to be highlighted in some way, so that people, because people feel like they're losing control everywhere, so that might be a really great
Sure.
Kind of foundational, feet-on-the-ground thing for people to realize that they have the power to make this decision.
That should be a sheet out of town.
Maybe replace one of the four here.
Well, to this point, we're taking, we've got to define what our message track is, right? If the core message track is transforming, we're already part of it, but one of the key, and there's no doubt, I think, we own this, is, you know? And there's always, every so often, you actually get to vote yes or no, just part of education, maybe a little, you know, history or whatever, but it's not every day you get to vote yes or no on education, so. And we own this, so it's perfect.
So internally, other questions that people have are about enrollment. So let me just shrink it down so you can see it as a whole. So this is the enrollment page, talks about the size of the district, talks down here about our race and ethnicity balance, I don't know why it showed up with a space in there, but our historic enrollment, so you can see that coming up. You can see our enrollment projections down here. There's a disclaimer in here, but that we count differently. And I think that's one that we want to make sure that people understand, and we'll definitely have to do that as we go through the process, so, hold this up so you can read it. So projected head count data provided by DeYoung Richter in December 16. Projected head count does not include students in homeschool assistance, students from outside districts receiving services within the district, certified enrollment figure utilized above, includes students in these categories, and an increased weight factor for students receiving special education. So this is our certified enrollment count, and then this is the projection that comes to us from DeYoung Richter. So we could not, there's no historical number that you could go back and refer to from here that would correlate, so the best we could do is draw that up as two separate pieces. At least the focus groups internally that we shared that with said, okay, it makes sense with the disclaimer in there.
Can I say that it's going to be really important? And I don't think this was done on purpose, but when we talk about our students to not say racial balance?
Yes.
Because that can come across all kinds of wrong ways.
Demographic count.
Yes, I'm just saying, mixing languages across major issues that happen, I think we need to be cautious about our language and how we talk about this, because folks still have some residue from previous decisions. I'm not saying that we shouldn't talk about those things, because they're important, but I'm just saying, from a language standpoint, when we start mixing that, it just starts
Well, that's a good point, because what we're going to do is, when we build a slideshow, we're actually going to have a note section in it, because it won't always necessarily be me talking, or people are sitting at the table here, so if they're building principles that are talking about this, we want to make sure that they've got the right vocabulary to use.
I just wonder in this one, so if the message is keep track of growth, why not just stick to that? There's a lot of information out here that doesn't really relate to growth. And your next slide, you're going to show how you would add like 60% of the kids in the fortals.
Yeah, again, what we did was, we asked questions, and then we tried to answer questions. So these were questions that came up from internal stakeholders who had asked. And essentially, what they were doing was, they were asking us so that they could better understand the why.
So if the message is growth?
And we may find, and this was part of the conversation we had, we'll have these sheets available, we'll have them on the website, but for instance, this one's going to be a key, because people want to see stuff. And this one's going to be a key.
Right.
And these could be run off back and back.
Well, I think your growth is key.
Yeah.
Go to your next one.
Before you go, just a quick question this one. Are those ones, they seem lower than 23 to 1, and 3 to 6, and 20 to 1, and K2?
Average. When you go, yeah, they're averages across the district.
Are those somehow are taking account then of the half-teachers that are, you know, the half-FTEs that are?
Sure. It's all FTE, and all students in all buildings.
So when you're averaging those numbers, and you've got a class that's, you know, big in the morning, but not for the specials, are you using the number for the specials to give some kind of average of the two?
Sure, it's an average of the two. So if you've got, let's just make numbers up that are easy to divide, so if you've got 30 kids with one and a half teachers, you're dividing 30 by one and a half.
You're dividing.
Yeah.
On the growth slide, we have the, next to the enrollment there, two-thirds way across, next to the blue, it's the special education students and free and reduced students. Is that the best terminology we should be using for free and reduced students?
But why do you have that on there?
Yeah. Again, we were trying to answer questions that were asked in the focus groups, questions that people ask.
At least include the word lunch, though, it sounds funny, it's not what the students are.
Oh, it doesn't say lunch.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I've looked at this a million times, and I agree.
Due to your terminology, your message is capacity.
It's free and reduced lunch eligible? I wonder if that got cut.
I'm just not sure how that affects, unless you're trying to tie it into weighted resource.
The question that they asked when we were talking about it was, okay, so we know that you are building more classrooms at Alexander Elementary School, and you just built that, why are you doing that type of thing? So that was part of the conversation that went along with, what the increase in poverty and weighted resource allocation model.
I could do two, you could have growth on one side, and demographic information or something.
I think we're going to have to see a lot of messages in there, I think we're going to come back and go, what is our message track? And then, you know, to be very clear.
There is a lot of stuff up here. To me, I agree with you, Chris, is that the one, the primary language, the ELL, the free and reduced, the special education students, and over the left, the student, race, ethnicity, I just don't see.
I don't know what I mean. Because if you take this, now go to your next.
And the next one, let's see.
It's there. That last message we just had, and this
Sure.
Makes perfect sense together. It's like one thing. Enrollment's exploding, 73% of the kids were in buildings, that would have went down to 60% without the plan, with the plan it goes to 100, right? I mean, it's just like one message, right?
Yep.
I just think less is more, because I feel like this is so much. We got folk pictures, and we got to be able to drive through town and read a couple of paragraphs. Less is more, can we direct them back to the white letters, and they can see these additional forms? I mean, if we're going to be putting this out to the community, the consumption of this is, we've got to have a PhD.
That's where Kristen was at, too, because she was really looking at where it was at this, now this one. Now, she was trying to get it down to, can I just get this stuff on flyer that I can hand out to people, that, you know, we can print and cut, sort of thing? Because this is a third of a sheet, these are easy for us to run off.
Sure.
You know, so that was, she was trying to take in all the information that we were provided, and say, okay, I can get those answers to you, and I can jam all this stuff in here, and I'll tell you. She was trying to work magic to stuff on her.
And this is amazing, so I'm not taking this from her, because I know this took a long time.
No, so she struggled to try to find room for all this stuff, so.
So maybe what I'm thinking is that, you know, if you want more stuff.
It's this piece over here.
Again, I just think we have to step back at the end. So it's great, right? We're throwing everything out, and then you've got to step back and go, what is the key? What are the key messages?
The key piece is right over here. That's the message.
But there's a difference between what we might want to talk about in a presentation to a PTO versus what we want to hand somebody.
Yep.
We don't want to hand somebody with something, a piece of paper with, or a flyer with five extra charts that...
So imagine a handbill with this on one side, and that on the other side. That's what Kristen was trying to do.
With the dark blue card?
Yeah, just the pieces on the right.
Just the piece on the right?
Yeah.
And go back to the other one?
To this one.
So front and back.
Maybe, to make, you know, what's the most compelling graphics on it?
And I mean, the cowboy card part needs to be clean.
And I guess, then the last piece, which I agree with you, Chris, is a powerful chart to show.
The left two-thirds, I have no idea what that has to do with anything.
People ask questions, don't match when we're talking to them.
Yeah, but it's not part of the GeoBond. The right side, I love it, with your other graphs. I mean, that's beautiful.
That's a pretty easy fix.
I just think some of this stuff we can use electronically, when people can click on it, and have interactive maps of what that looks like, versus, because it's a lot, and as a, like a regular person on the street, handing me all this, I'm not going to read, I don't want to read all this.
And I think that wasn't the intent either.
I want to know how does this impact me, and I want to know how my vote will impact students, that's all I want to know.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that was actually part of that. As Kristen and I were trying to listen to people and say, okay, what are the nuggets that they really want to know? Just the pieces that they really wanted to know here, and these are the pieces that they want to know here. So how much do you think, why are you doing it?
The other one we're going to have to add is the HVAC. I mean, number one, number two, number three feedback, right? So that'd be part of the why you're doing it.
Do we need already data set information, so that's pretty easy for us to work with?
What's that?
HVAC stuff.
Oh, yeah, some cool graphics. A little fun intended.
I like it.
Just have like the temporary thing, just with picture of a kid sweating.
Oh my gosh.
Let's not do that.
How about a thermometer that shows blue, cool temperatures versus hot?
I like that. I like that.
Well, that's a great curve, and it's awesome.
We wanted to, we didn't want to show up today with a white sheet of paper and say, what should we put on there? So that's why we started asking questions about three months ago, and saying, what do you need to know? What makes you want to vote? What makes you want to get out to the polls? What work on? What makes you want to vote? All right, I got a lot of good information there. Any other feedback on that?
Is there any way to have a specific link for this?
It's already built, it's invisible right now.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, like the actual website?
Sorry about that.
You understand, does that make sense? Like the temporary website?
Yes, yeah, we have it actually, so it'll link right off the front page of the webpage.
Okay, because I mean, because they can get all this, it'd be easy.
Yep.
I'm just trying to make it simple for community.
We want to make it as easy as possible for people to find. It's actually the logo, so you just click right down there.
Sorry, speaking of the logo, any thought on having the logo and having the projects in each district within the logo?
Yes, I appreciate that, and Kristen is already working on that.
Great.
And that could be a full pager.
From where do you take these of that?
Right.
And that's deep.
Memo.
I was thinking five, but whatever.
Who's that?
Oh, okay.
So, all this frame is people, you've already read it, so I'm very, and remain very interested. We've got a few conversations about this, right? So tax rate outlook, when we're looking at the next five to 10 years. I understand there's legal requirements for what we have to do with the GeoBond, and what's beyond the ballot, right? So we take today's property value, and you keep it flat, and you come up with a number, that's our buck sixty-two.
Yeah, no comeback on the final number for us, but it's our, one, 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 one hundred and fifty-two, yes.
So let's just say they come back to buck sixty-two, and it's going to be a little lower, but that's fine. But what's the really, really? So we've already talked about the debt expiring, right? So what are the other opportunities? So, I mean, one is, we're going to have real property valuation increases, right? So can we get the model populated with some scenarios on, well, not can we, I want you to get the model populated with various scenarios. And I think we need to decide what is our best estimate on what we think the property tax outlook is. So I don't know if we do this through the certified budget process, or we talk, correct your cash reserve, looking forward, we'll talk about this year, but also looking forward. Those are probably the two big ones. I don't know if there's other ideas.
I put together a model for you, if you want to look at it.
Oh, that's awesome. Right now? Oh, my goodness, that's exciting. Yeah, that's good.
Really excited. Well, before I pass this out, I have to disqualify any of the information in here as being accurate, right? Because I'm not a financial advisor, I'm not a, I'm not bond counsel. We don't have the size of our bond, we don't have our interest rate assumptions, we don't have any of that stuff. Okay. So this is a model, and that's all it is. But I think it will give you a pretty good idea of where this information's going to come back. I'd say it's in the ballpark, all right? And I think you'll be interested as to how I took a look at this. First of all, you have to understand that for the last nearly 15 years, our running average increase in our assessed valuation is above 4.5%. If future performance is any indication of past performance, one could make a case that our assessed valuation's going to grow at a pretty robust pace. 4% is a pretty robust pace for growth. I don't believe that you'll get any of those types of assumptions out of our financial advisor or bond counsel, however, because it's just too aggressive, all right? But at the same time, know that that history exists. And as we apply tax burden to the tax base, if it does grow at that rate, we'll actually reduce the taxes by that amount. Whatever we're able to grow, we'll reap the benefit of that. There's also the retiring debt, and that was key in our timing, right? When we put all this together, we wanted to have that ability to have, be GeoBond or property debt-free at the time that we asked the community to come in and possibly need to pay more on the way of taxes. And so that's 53 cents as of this year, which is the last year, budget year 18, that we have the current GeoDebt, and then that's gone. So we can take that out of the current levy. Our current levy is, you know, 13.99 cents, fourteen dollars, you know, for any practical purpose for discussion, right? Cash reserve is another matter. Now, while President Lynch says, yes, we have $2.20 tied up in that, there's an ongoing need for cash reserve. We run, currently, we run a $6 million special ed deficit, we run a $1.2 million ELL deficit, we also are opening up Liberty High School, which will require between 1.5 and $2 million of cash. And we have other SBRC requirements as well for asbestos and other things that we do. Our running cash reserve requirements, as I project those out for the years to come, are going to run in the ballpark of $9 to $10 million. And so being able to take a dollar off is a little more aggressive than we'll be able to manage.
How is this?
I know, you were optimistic, I understand. But I do believe that we've worked very hard the last four budget cycles that I've been involved with, this fifth budget cycle now, that we've improved the cash position of our school district to the point where it is now over the 10% threshold for a healthy district. That's one of the great indicators that we have, that our financial position has improved. And so as such, we're in the position of being able to scale that back, still maintain that 10%, and probably levy more like $10 million versus the 12.5 that we'll be levying this year. So as such, we'll be able to reduce that. And I'm thinking that without, without a lot of anxiety on my part, we can probably take about forty-five cents off of our levy by using that cash reserve flexibility we have, and still maintain a healthy balance. Okay? So, when you add all those up, and then you plug in a very modest or a very conservative growth rate on the assessed valuation, and I put in one percent, even though we've been running for the last fifteen years a four point five percent, I put in one percent. That's what this model shows. The net change in taxes throughout all of this, the highest rate occurs in two thousand twenty-three, when all of our debt is sold. Whether that's in four sales, or, or five sales, or three sales, we don't know that yet. Remember my first statement? I don't know any of this yet. This is just an assumption model, right? And so, until those numbers come back, we won't have the firm numbers to share with you, but this'll be in the ballpark. So what we, what we're looking at is two thousand and twenty-three, right now, the way our debt is structured from the last October analysis that we had PFM do. And if you remember, that was for a hundred and ninety-four million. I just translated that into the hundred and eighty-eight million that we're, will be needing now. And the highest tax rate that we have, that we're looking at, will be two thousand twenty-three. So I highlighted that line for you. So, I'll go ahead and pass it out. You can take a look at this, and I'll go over it. I'll go over it with you. So on the left-hand side, is there, is this coming around? I don't know.
Do we have enough?
Okay. So on, on the left-hand side is the fiscal year, and as you know, bonds are sold for roughly, oh, a twenty-year period of time. This is what GEO bonds are sold. I plugged in the one percent assessed valuation, which is a very modest growth rate for, for that period of time. I would expect our tax base to grow much more aggressively than that. It has in the past, it probably will in the future. But one percent's a pretty conservative rate. Then I plugged in the debt, which would represent a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars plus interest. Okay, so the total amount here is, and just north of two hundred and fifty million dollars. That's represented in this column. Then that calculates the tax rate when you apply the assessed valuation against the, the, of the debt, and you get what the total tax rate would be for that given year. Then you take out of that, which is in our current levy now, the fifty-three cents. And you do that every year, because each individual year stands on its own. And so, because it's in the levy now, in order to get the net effect on your levy, you have to remove that for, because that's being retired. And then I retire, then I use our cash reserve flexibility of forty-five cents, and you can see that instead of a dollar sixty-two, we're actually looking at no more than a dollar. That we're going to be net adjustment to our tax base as we increase, as we sell all of our debt, and this represents all of our debt being sold for the hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. Now, if you increase the assessed valuation, each half a percent you increase that drives down the tax rate by roughly five cents. So for instance, if I were to plug four in here, the net effect over in, in two thousand twenty-three would be seventy cents. Okay, that's the most that the tax rate would go up if we put a growth rate of four percent over here in the assessed evaluation. So that just kinda gives you an idea of how to play with this model. If you have thoughts on, on what that might be.
It's just for that one year? Every other year's different?
No. It, it takes, it takes thirty cents off of every year's.
No, but yeah, but so the seventy cents is just for one year?
Right.
That'd be the peak.
That would be the peak.
I think that's just a very important concept, too.
Right. So, if you take that down, and I just provided you a second page here, just to put it all in context for you. You've seen this before, but here are the ten largest school districts in the state of Iowa. We have the very lowest tax rate, and we have the very lowest tax rate by a dollar. Dubuque is the next one up on the list, and it's ninety-nine cents higher than ours. All right? So even if we were to add a dollar for this hundred and eighty-eight million, we would still be ninth on the list of the tenth largest school districts in the state. Plus, if you wanna look at the average, the average, we're two dollars and thirty-one cents below the average of these ten schools, and we would be asking our community, at most, we would be adjusting our tax rate up by a dollar should they approve the bond, and we sell all hundred and eighty-eight million dollars worth of debt to do this facility master plan.
So two eighty-seven cents.
For what?
Because it's really seventy cents. Which would be great, because then our, I'm just looking back at our tax rate history, right? It's fourteen sixty-nine is the high.
Right. If you plugged in four percent, like I said, it would take thirty cents off of each one of these, and so at the peak, it would be seventy cents.
So, and the twelve-year moving average is four point seven, right?
The twelve-year moving average is, is about four, I think it's four point six seven or something like that.
Yeah. Four point seven.
No. It's four point six seven, but that, I, if you wanna round up, that's fine.
We've been surprised by TIF, right?
Well, not really. This, this assessed valuation actually includes TIF. When you do bonds, they include the TIF as a part of the taxing piece, right? So it's not.
No, but there's a significant message track, so if you could get it to seventy cents, we could stay under, I mean, in two thousand ten, eleven, our tax rate was fourteen sixty-nine.
Yeah, we've lowered it a dollar since I've been here.
But we could stay under that.
We could stay under that.
Right.
And that's just the peak here.
Right.
Again, that's where I think we need to have a tax rate outlook that expresses this. And this would be our base, this would be our approach. Now, we should talk to other uppers, or if there's other, you know, talks of the downers, or the uppers, or the areas, but.
The future interest rates skew that.
Yes. It's on my list.
They could definitely go up.
All the assumptions skew it.
Yeah, all of them.
And what will be on the ballot will be a hundred and eighty-eight million, you know, be your conservative number.
Right.
We just need to provide an outlook out, here's the outsides.
Right.
How's the boy Craig?
Now, just remember.
See, that doesn't look as accurate, right? It is accurate based on assumptions.
You worry me when you take numbers and you go and publish them all over the place.
That's what people do. That's really good.
I really do feel that you have, you're in a good financial position. Your, your district is solvent right now, it's at that ten percent. I feel comfortable that we could provide that forty-five cent flexibility from the cash reserve without compromising ourselves in, in any anticipating future problems. And of course, the fifty-three cents is a given, because the debt retires this year under the, under the bond. So I think those are very, very realistic assumptions that I placed in here, and I feel very comfortable with them.
Personally, I'd like us to go forward with four percent. I'm, I'm being conservative, not doing four point seven, but. Twelve-year moving average at four point seven, I mean. Unless you have an, an actual report from an assessor saying that it could be something different, I don't know why you would.
No, I'm.
Focus on.
It is.
Well, shit, man. Legal, you gotta put the legal stuff over here. You put the tax rate outlook over here, because what's really gonna happen?
The, the thing that, the thing that you're gonna see is that the financial advisor and the bond counsel won't be that aggressive. Okay?
Oh, they can't be.
They can't be. And so, the documents that come back to them aren't going to match what our message is if you put it in at four percent. That, that would be my only concern. And trying to explain why their documents are different than the documents we're producing
Oh, I think it's easy.
Might be a little problematic.
Legally required number that we're disclosing, here's the real outlook, based on all what we speak for.
I see your, I see your point, and I can't disagree.
We're doing worst-case scenario.
Right.
And you're doing best-case scenario.
I'm not sure how reassured people are gonna be to find out the tax rates going down. The whole reason we're not going up as much, the whole reason is because their house can be assessed at a higher number.
Well, it's not necessarily their house is assessed at a higher value. The, the pie gets bigger, there's more property being assessed.
And some of us, and it's a little evolved, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, but I think for us, the biggest gain in, in Johnson County is that pie actually gets bigger.
But we have no control over that.
Yeah.
That's a given, whether we do this or not.
Sure.
So, I'm just one person, but I'm not comfortable with printing something that doesn't match with what PFM says, because I think that breeds mistrust and questions. And people will say, I mean, they can run with that, and say, you're saying this, they're saying that.
Let's get the data.
I don't trust you.
Let's get the data.
So, I'm just, that's my point. I would go with, I would go with more conservative, because then you're not overpromising.
No, I think, again, I just, that's fine, let the debate begin. I, I can't wait to see the numbers that come back, but, but I'm still gonna stick with my fifty-fifty. We should be telling the public what we think is really gonna happen. Fifty percent chance of being high, fifty percent chance of being low. We shouldn't give them something that's so low that it's not gonna happen.
Well, and one of the things I think we're gonna have to figure out how to navigate through is because, and I'm not, I don't have a stone's ear, but I, questions came out after the article in the paper on Clear Creek, and people said, wait a minute, how can they, how can they say they're gonna pass a bond, it's not gonna cost anybody any money, and you're saying you're gonna pass a bond, and it's gonna cost me a buck and a half? And the answer is, Tim's conversation with the paper was best-case scenario discussion. He's talking about growth in their property value.
You're saying best-case scenario? Maybe best-case scenario, six percent property valuation growth.
Historic case scenario, how's that?
Right.
So I, and that's what, you know, I, I, my back would be a text, I couldn't get him on, I couldn't get him on the phone, but essentially, that's what, what Tim did.
But their ballot will look like, they're gonna borrow a hundred and twenty million.
Right.
It'll be a buck or two buck increase on the ballot.
Right.
And they're gonna tell a story on how property valuations are gonna offset that.
That's what he's doing right now.
Right. The only desk, what, the only game is the absolute question, why aren't we being informed about Clear Creek?
Just my opinion. I, I just think, I, I would rather be, have people feel like they're trusting over time than instead of questioning and saying, explain this to me.
Now, here, here's what, I'm fine with having the whole grid. You picked, you picked the valuation. You picked whether it was zero, one, two, three, four, but I'd rather just give everybody the grid, and give them all the information. All I can tell you is it's been four point seven the last twelve years, and if you pick it zero, then, then you have all the information.
We can have PFM give you different scenarios. I mean, it's not like.
Luminoline.
Their guess is just a guess, just like anyone else's guess, right?
I think that's all we're asking, whether you do it or they do it.
Right.
I think we just, and they're gonna come with, this is just like Ron, they come with the recommendation, but, and I don't, maybe we don't have a single point of view, maybe we have a range. I'm always a big fan of a range, too, right? Maybe it's seventy cents to a buck, I don't know. But people can pick their number, and then they've got what the increase is. But we can, with relatively high assurance, I mean, the debt expiring is a hundred percent.
That's a guarantee.
The cash reserve is a very high probability. In fact, there's legally gonna have to start bringing it down.
Yep.
So there's ninety-some cents, that's guaranteed, right?
Exactly.
Well, this succeeded expectations, right? This is, this is good. Can we ask them, though? I, I mean, I'd like to get it from them. It's, it's pretty simple, plug in a couple different numbers in your spreadsheet, and give us some scenarios.
Yeah, they have the software that, you know, goes through all that stuff, and they can, they can provide us with numbers, and I can have them work out different scenarios, that's fine.
And I think it'd be great to say, here's their recommended scenario, and then just give everybody all the data, the chart, right? Simple.
All right. Move on to one-to-one, computer policy?
Um, just one, one second, one second. Oh, so communication, so some of our principals are already starting communication, like weekly, and I don't know if we have a coordinated, uh, communication strategy.
Yeah, we've, uh, some of the principals have been working with Kristen, saying, hey, let's start getting this stuff out, because, and it's really, it's a reaction, questions that are coming in from their parents. So I, we've started that conversation with them, and those, those of the schools that have been aggressive about getting us in front of their PTAs, too.
So maybe we could proactively turn that, and start, you know?
Yep. Cool.
All right.
So, one-to-one policy, the document that's uploaded is actually a draft, technology acceptable use policy. It's not specific to one-to-one, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that in just a second. So, just as an overview of what this document is, this is a document that's been developed by me, has been reviewed by various technology staff, district library coordinator, technology council, and I've talked about it with Matt to some extent. And in full disclosure, this is based upon a policy that I developed in my previous district, and has been reviewed just a couple of years ago by Hollers and Cooney, so it does have some attorney review as well. Really, the overriding goal of this policy, the way it's constructed, is to make expectations for technology use clear, while avoiding references to specific services or laundry lists that will probably become dated or incomplete as technology changes. So this really seeks to deal with issues that are going to, or acceptable uses that are going to stay the same, or worded such that they will stay consistent. The policy is designed to apply to staffing students, so rather than breaking out into a student AUP and a staff AUP, this is worded such that it addresses both. It does not establish specific consequences for violation of acceptable use. There are places where the wording is such that for staff members, for instance, the, you know, consequence may be, you know, up to and including termination for students, up to and including expulsion, but it defers to existing disciplinary policies, as I try to create a separate disciplinary policy just for technology. And as I mentioned, it doesn't specifically address one-to-one, whether we assign it to me, and this is just my opinion, whether we assign a device directly to a student as part of a one-to-one program, or the device is being used in a computer lab, the expectations for use are the same. That said, guidelines for basic care, maintenance, use of Chromebooks will be provided here in the one-to-one review process, but I don't necessarily see those things as rising to the level that they should be part of an acceptable use policy, which to me serves the primary function of informing everybody who's using our technology resources, what are, what are our expectations for the use of those resources are. So with that, I'm sure you don't want me to go through every single bit of this policy, so I'd be happy to take any questions as we've had a chance to glance through it, or concerns about the scope of the policy.
You know, uh, some of it seems kinda like, almost legal, legal boilerplate, or a little bit over the top, in some places, and there's money that's necessarily, I mean, all communications, I'm looking at the privacy part. Files containing personal information about a student that are transmitted or stored in the system are treated no differently than others. So files, they have no expectation of privacy, no material, I mean, that's not really true, is it? Certainly, FERC gives students some kind of expectation of privacy, and some student information that might go over a computer.
That is correct. That's not specifically true. I think that the, the underlying message there is that, and it probably should be worded a little bit more clearly, sensitive data should not be sent via electronic means that are specifically designed for transmitting that information. For instance, we may have information regarding free reduced lunch status of students that is appropriately accessible by a certain staff member, but I would never want that list to be emailed to a staff member, because of the risk of compromise, and because we have systems that are specifically designed in our school for, in this instance, to provide that information at a much higher level, guaranteed that that won't be disclosed inappropriately. So I agree that the wording and that could be clear. That's the point of that sentence. That's the point of that sentence.
And I guess, it seems to be written that the big picture, and it's gonna apply to these Chromebooks, it seems almost like it's saying, don't email your friends. I mean, am I wrong to read it that way? Do not use this for anything other than school business.
Yeah, it's a little bit tough because-
That seems a little over listening, if that's true.
Well, and it very clearly doesn't say that, you know, nowhere in this. And the boilerplate, to be honest, if we're to use a boilerplate AUP, it would say only use it for school business, and that's not included here intentionally. But the reality is that I think that our students and our staff have a right to know and be made explicitly aware that anything that they send, you know, via their school email could be accessed by a district staff member. It could be subject to a records request. FERPA protects students, but not staff so much. And so there's, there's the possibility, I mean, it's not private material that's sent over a school account for the most part. And so, to me, I think there's an important reason to err on the side of making sure that people are aware of that.
Well, I can see the awareness part. But you know, some of it seems to be like, don't use humor, don't send an unsolicited message. Well, someone's gotta go first if they're gonna communicate via email. So I just kind of think so, it seems a little over the top, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and certainly some, I mean, like you said, this is a draft document, I'm more than-
Won't you go to your words with it?
Well, not particularly, I just want someone else to do it. You know, like, for example, acceptable use of technology. If students are going to be emailing their friends on an informal basis, can we really say things like, it's unacceptable to promote political positions? Or they're just gonna have conversations with each other, right? I wondered that one myself. Hey, if I send an email using my computer to a politician in Des Moines advocating a policy, am I violating this already?
Good question. This should specify that this is for staff promotion and political positions. There are a number of places, I mentioned this is for student and staff member. Places where it specifically states staff may not or students should. That's one that I believe should have that qualifier there. You know, district staff member using district resources to promote political or religious positions is obviously problematic. As you've been saying, using district resources, we have to consult attorneys. I don't believe that is-
Communicating ways that disparage others.
Right.
Someone's gonna send an message back, or Trump, or Biden, or something, or something.
Exactly, I was thinking the same thing.
You know, it's pretty broad.
There might be a government class that would encourage students to contact politicians, and they might not all be complimentary.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Also, the, you know, kind of the, again, I just think of myself, I'm just looking at this. You know, if it's a business-related, if we have district employees that are doing consulting and that, if they're doing it on their district email, is that a violation of this acceptable use of technology? Does that has to be completely separate?
I believe that is a violation and should be a violation. Again, it's, legally, I believe that that is a violation of laws regarding the use of public resources. There's a gray area there in terms of enforcement and qualification. But I think that that is actually, you cannot promote a private venture through public resources.
So you're saying if somebody emails you and say, hey, can you come consult with us? And you email them back like, hey, email me at such and such and such. Would that be considered a violation?
No, not if you say, hey, email me at such and such and such and do it.
I'm like, you can't control it.
But if you started negotiating with them-
Well, yeah. I have one question. I mean, it's great to have policies, but I'm always concerned about how bias plays into this, as well as what's the consequence? Because that's not what I'm seeing, is the consequences. And so, I worry about the kids that I work with because all of them use humor and sarcasm all day. We did, I do it back and forth. I'm probably in violation of this entire online etiquette, probably. But I'm just saying, like, you know, that's hard when you say use common courtesy because it's like, who's, who was designing what that is? Politeness, you know what I'm saying? Like, that gets, that starts giving into that kind of biases.
So the online etiquette section is one that, we actually had a pretty decent debate. Like I mentioned, this has been reviewed by a number of other people that have debated. Most of those elements that appear in B, under number two, online etiquette, probably some of these others, but B in particular, are parts of our digital citizenship curriculum. And so, those were advocated for inclusion because we're trying to reinforce that, that digital citizenship aspect. I certainly, again, I'm very open to an argument that that should be in an acceptable use policy for reasons like ones that you're stating. You know, if we reasonably expect students not gonna communicate humor, we don't want them to communicate without humor, same for staff for that matter.
Yeah.
I think-
I think there's a continuum of what this looks like. But I think we should be cautious about when we put it in as policies because the people that are hacked, I mean, everybody that is here at this table, if this is here for however long, might not be here. And I get concerned about that because there's so much bias that our kids are already saying, I can't, I can make this joke, but if so-and-so makes this joke, they can walk away, but I'm getting attention. They're already dealing with that. And so, sometimes this can be used as a tool against our kids and not always for. I worry about kind of that kind of thing because there's so much implicit bias that's played into, what does that look like? Because we can look at our own statistics, we say physical aggressiveness. Like, you know what I'm saying? Like, the kids that I know, it, somebody else might be like, oh my God, they're gonna do something. And I'm going, yeah, I wasn't scared. You know, you know what I'm saying? So I worry about when we have kind of biased language. Like, it's one thing to say, you know, cite all quotes, which, I mean, kids are not-
Correct.
You know what I'm saying? I worry about the enforcement of such policy and how that, what that looks like, how that implement, how it's implemented and how kids are impacted by that long range.
Adam, if you were to take a closer look at this in our policy, there was, many, would you be willing to be part of that discussion?
Of course. Yeah, I think that was the, you know, the general idea was that being on the agenda tonight was to give you an idea of what we've worked on. It's not by any means, like Adam said, and ready to implement form. But we wanted you to know the conversations we were having, your feedback's helpful. We could definitely take it to policy and governance, I think, to part of what you're talking about, Director Villach, avoiding putting consequences in there because we do feel like we have consistent, or we've made headway on consistent expectations and practices in our discipline. So if we feel good about that, we didn't want to create a whole other host of scenarios. We really wanted to sync those two up and have them work together to complement each other. So if that's what you guys feel is the appropriate next step, I think we'd be happy to bring it there and continue to work and refine it, so.
Just think that we work as a small team to get some suggestions or whatever. Because I, you know, especially, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so is what's deemed offensive. What's deemed is, is an email including a photograph or work of art that has body parts included in it, is that considered pornography or art? And is it transmitted now? It's in the eye of who's making the, you know, it's the oh, I know it when I see it, well, no. You know, it's open interpretation. So I think it would be nice to-
And it does have a piece in here about subject to this, policies of the school building.
Right.
So, you know, those things are kind of, it just worries, it just worries me because kids, you, and this is talking about their cell phones and their smartphones, et cetera. So like, I mean, good Lord, it's probably, we breaking policies right now, probably, with some of our kids. I just, I worry about when we put this in, in place, what does this look like? Is this something else the kids are like, another?
It takes a lot of discretion on the part of enforcing about what parts are being enforced. That makes it worse, Steve.
And then with the bias piece, knowing that we have such disparate numbers when it comes to our kids of color and behavior, about how, what, what is, what is the standard of behavior? It's usually not based off of, the expectations of that is coming from a certain class, from a certain group of people. And so then what happens is, our kids that are not from that, when they bump up against it, it ends up being a disciplinary situation for them. If they're not accustomed to that, they don't know that then. What happens is they keep hitting their head in the square when they're surface. And so, I worry about stuff like this when they're just like, I mean, I'm just thinking about the conversations that I'm having with kids and they're texting me back and forth about stuff. And I'm like, no, don't do that, or you know, whatever, trying to help them process. And they can make some of these mistakes that could, could really interrupt their life.
One note I do want to mention, just to avoid any confusion, is that the cell phone, smartphone, handheld device section doesn't prohibit any use on those devices. This document doesn't try to touch that. That's only really saying that those can only be used according to the building's policy. So this document, we really try to stay away from student personal devices entirely.
I mean, I guess some of my questions kind of go beyond the policies, just how this all will work, you know? So these students are gonna get this Chromebook, do they put it in home the end of the day with that, right? And is it gonna block, I mean, is it gonna go on Facebook on that thing?
So we allow Facebook in the district. So they have access to Facebook externally unless their parents at home implement a block on my network now.
Who's responsible for the, like, the parents somehow, what if it disappears?
The computer.
Yeah, the Chromebook, when you take it home, like, I'm very curious, I'm gonna see all this coming back, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So-
Who's responsible for it? Are their parents notified in some way about responsibility they have?
Couple things. One, the luxury we have is that we are nearly the first district to launch one of them. In fact, we're one of the last. So we have a lot of districts to learn from in terms of precedent.
Do you have any policies to-
Yeah, every district has a policy that's fairly similar to this one. Most are more restrictive in terms of some of the things that, you know, concerns have been addressed. This one is pretty open. But specific to where the responsibility lies, I feel pretty strongly that we shouldn't be giving families a financial burden for something that we're applying as part of the key curricular, our key curricular program. And so, to some extent, we expect loss that is built into our budget for-
Do you want to replace it if it disappears or is damaged?
We'll replace it if something happens multiple times, if something is smashed intentionally, if there's clearly lawful damage. It becomes the same kind of situation that happens when a textbook disappears or a textbook is destroyed. Those are handled through high-level decisions.
But then, let's imagine smashing. Does that mean I just go without?
No, you would be issued, you'd be issued another device. If it's physically smashed, you know, student gets upset and smashes it, I don't know. The district would issue another device. Now, use of it might be restricted in that case. You know, restricted to during the day, for instance. But at the same time, we, this is my opinion, we cannot deprive a student of something that we're saying is critical to our students' education, that teachers are expecting them to have.
And if it's lost and it ends up at a pawn shop on eBay.
Can you trace that, can you trace the-
Yeah, we can, we can trace to some extent. One of the nice things about Chromebooks is that they're very easy for us to trace. They're registered with the district, and we can render them unusable if they disappear. So the values at the pawn shop would be nothing because they wouldn't be useful. And they're all laser edged with I O, property I O, so you can use school district.
Those are real high-level concerns with districts that issued, like, items to everybody or that would have issued even items, the resale or ability to use those on a pawn shop or, you know, other market scenario was a lot higher than a Chromebook like Adam's talking about. So that price point being lower has kind of to our advantage that way, so.
So if I get one of these things as a ninth grader, I mean, to hang on for four years, I'm just gonna have to turn it in, right?
Yeah, lifespan would be three years.
Well, that's good, so basically, we're gonna have to keep eyeing these things every year, right?
Correct. Yeah, we, I mean, all technology has a lifespan. So the way our budget is calculated, I have projections out for a number of years, and they include purchasing, you know, X thousand devices per year as part of that three-year provision. One of the Chromebooks is they cost about one-fifth what our current computers cost. So the overall expenditure on computers actually drops under one-to-one than it was previously.
Do we have any kind of an idea on how many houses, that you have to have internet access at home to make the thing usable at home, right? Or unless you have some stored material you're taking home and using it. Do we have anything to know as far as like, how many will be going to homes that don't have that access?
Two, two items there. One, we do a survey every spring called the Clarity Survey, and I usually update you on some of the results of that. And one of the questions that that asks is a question about home internet access. And our district has fairly high access rates, about 92% according to the last survey. But we know that there are kids who don't have home internet access. So I'm working with Sprint on a grant that sounds like we're very likely to get. Where Sprint would provide us with free cellular hotspots that we could assign at no charge to students who qualify. Their qualification criteria will probably be eligibility for free and loose function. And so we can assign those to the students. They provide at no charge up to two gigabytes of 4G data speed for that hotspot. After they hit two gigabytes, it just throttles the speed a little bit. So that becomes an option for students who don't have home internet to be able to still connect at home.
And that's something that Sprint's comping us on?
Yeah, it's part of their one million, Project One Million, I think it's called, which is a grant for schools with a stated goal of providing internet access to every child in America. But again, no charge to the district. The only cost to the district is that we administer the program. That would be that for our libraries, in terms of getting these devices out. But the beauty of it is, again, it said no charge, it said no charge to the students.
And, oh.
So now for students that already have their own computer, can they just opt out?
We probably wouldn't allow, well, this is a difficult question. Opt out is a relative term. I think we would provide a computer for the student. They would not be required to take it home to their end of place. So they could check it into the library during the evening. Our rates, for instance, I asked Bankany this question, they have a one-to-one program in all of their secondary buildings. And district-wide, they have about 11,000 students in the district, and they had, I think, four students who opted out for this year. So the alphabet-
Well, you have to check in, I mean, they're not gonna do that, so.
Well, so their opt-out is the check-in. So that's their equivalent of the opt-out. And they have, like I said, four students who are doing it, so.
And I can't see a student going through that to do that. I mean, I think they probably just say, okay, I'll keep it at home and I'll shoot on a computer. Like, that's an expense for the district. I mean, if the kid's got their own computer that they'd rather use, do we need to issue them a computer?
Managing that would be incredibly difficult. I'll just say that.
Is there extra?
There's no real way to account for that. I mean, I think that when we were into it a couple of years, if we had some baseline about how many students were potentially doing that, we could maybe factor that into our model. But from the outset, you know, the goal would be to provide everybody one of those. But I would say, you know, for speaking with other districts that went through that model, most of them don't use the home device, they're using a school, school-provided one, so. But if that became a concern for us, I think we definitely would factor that in.
I think that'll be a transition. I mean, right now, kids are used to, they don't have a computer at school unless they bring their own. So, I mean, many of our, our own children have their computers that they take to school. So that'll be a transition, obviously.
The other thing, so we do manage the devices. So we deploy applications, we deploy plugins. Even for Chromebooks, we have management features that we use that are device-based, not user-based. So again, it's in the district, same just stuff, I'm using a district device while they're here.
I guess I have this image of kids going, you know, they got the thing in the backpack, and then after school, they're going to a track meet or something, and the backpacks are just sitting around somewhere. I mean, is that-
Yeah, I mean, again, again, in reference to the fact that we're not the first district to do this, the expected loss rate, rate over a three-year period is about three to five- The expected loss rate, rate over a three-year period is about three to five percent is what other districts report to us. I haven't come across any district that's reported a higher than five percent loss rate for one-to-one programs.
And does all schools have, not all, but do many have this kind of open, you know, charge? I'm just thinking, my nephews attended a school that, Williamsburg, what was there? I thought there was some sort of financial ownership of, I mean, for example, my own kid, he's going to make sure his computer isn't being lost because he's buying it. He bought us his own computer, he's going to buy another one if he loses it, so there's like ownership of it. Computer somebody else gives him, I would hope he would treat it the same, but I thought it was for, did they have to?
Yeah, I've been in districts where you've done both, where you've had a fee and not had a fee. And I don't think we experienced much difference in care or the treatment of it. I mean, I think it also goes to the fact that it's, you know, that's their access to their, you know, courses, you know. Yeah, they need it to be successful, so there's some of that. But as far as, you know, did we recoup necessary damage dollars anyways? You know, I think it was more the mindset to, you know, try to impinge the importance upon the student that, you know, hey, you're taking responsibility for this. But I didn't see a big difference in the place that I've been about having a fee or not having a fee. And it definitely wasn't a financial consideration that was really good because it was more just a, I don't know, twenty-five dollars if it was broke and a hundred dollars to replace it or something. Sometimes we got it and sometimes we didn't, but we ended up always getting a device so they could keep going on anyways.
You spend more money trying to get the money back.
Right, the human resources are trying to track it down.
So two things I wanted to say is I appreciate you bringing up Bankany because I know that two years ago, when I went to the I A S B, in like four, I dated a buddy's house in Bankany. And, you know, here his fourth grader is with a Chromebook. And I said, wow, a fourth grader with a Chromebook, do you trust him with that? And they said, well, we had to sign a number of things. And I think that if I remember, I may be wrong, but I think if I remember, they had like an optional like insurance policy that parents could, if they wanted to, they could, they could spend, it was like a, I want to say like a twenty dollar, then whatever, for breakage loss that.
And Bankany is, is a district that does a fee for damage. And most districts that do that offer some opt-in insurance option, where you buy that and then it covers the damage. Since we wouldn't, you know, at this point, you know, I'm proceeding as, as though we won't have a fee, in which case the insurance opt-in becomes less important.
Well, then the other thing I want to say is it's cool to hear you talking about a Sprint grant for mobile hotspots. I do know that the Iowa City Public Library is up to have mobile hotspots that people can check out.
Cool, and that'd be a great resource. One of my concerns about the Sprint program is that it is limited eligibility, right? It's free or reduced lunch, probably, they have to affirm that. But it's probably free or reduced lunch eligibility, especially at the high school level. We have students who slot in just above that, or their families haven't applied, whatever the case. And so it's good to know of other options that are out there.
But there's also, I mean, there's also the fact that Wi-Fi is, and you hate to think about a kid having to go sit at McDonald's.
Yeah.
Do his homework or sit.
But it is your big miss.
Right?
Do it.
What's that?
They're not going to do it, I mean.
Oh, I think, I think they would.
There's some kids that would.
I think they absolutely would.
I think you've even seen the evolution of the use of Chromebooks and the functionalities of Chromebooks as a solution for districts, not only because of the point, not, not only because of the price point, but also, Adam's speaking too, with just the access to Wi-Fi. I mean, our kids find access to Wi-Fi, I mean, that's the thing. So I think in this scenario, we feel a lot more comfortable with the fact that this is a solution than I would have five years ago from that standpoint, that they can find it, they'll, they'll get access to it, they do it now, you know, for their phones.
They absolutely do.
And so, you know, I think the amount of time they spend at school already, before and after school, you know, for a lot of them, or for other resources they hit in town, they'll get that access when they need it to complete the justice.
I think we agreed to keep this to P and G, but.
We're big on data-driven decisions and everything that way. It's the dinosaur of the war that is, you know, I remember when calculators came into the classroom.
Did you have a slide rule or?
Uh, we were, it was instructed, instructed. I, I used to know how to use one at a time, and it was, it was mainly just to prove that you could. We were lucky, some districts just had two brooks and a stick, but West Branch was progressive. But anyway.
They also were progressive with getting their one-to-one computers.
Well, we brag all the time about our ACT scores and everything, is this going to help? Is this, I mean, can we expect a measurable increase from this? I know it's, I know it's, it's where it's coming, but we spend a lot of money in professional development and paying to have the most educated teachers in the room. And are we going the right direction by getting, looking at a flat screen instead of interacting with an adult in the room?
Can I just add to that before you?
Sure, please.
I was fortunate enough to go to Southeast for sharing school day. Unfortunately, my daughter didn't want me to go with her. So what I did was I went to the office and I asked them to give me a schedule of five classes that lined up with her lunch, so I could actually eat lunch with her. And then she invited me to the next class, which was fine. But of the first four classes I went to, I went to one class that was, it was an English class and they were doing reading and writing. And actually, so they, every kid went to their, went to the thing, got their Chromebook that was in the classroom and got on there and they were doing writing. I can't remember what the exact short story was or something. And they had to have four stations where they had to interact with other kids and give the kids their Chromebook or they were sharing it on Google Drive. And they had to do, they had to check the spelling, they had to check the punctuation, and they had to have conversations back and forth with each other on that piece. And they were using, you know, the technology to help do that. When they had to look something up, they were looking up the meanings of words and which way to use it. So, I mean, I got to see it in action and the kids were interacting and then the teacher was able to go place to place and not, you know, just being upfront lecturing to the, to the kids. So I thought it was very beneficial to see in action.
It's college, it's very rigorous, that's what it is, that's what employers do.
I mean, that's the thing, is that this, this is our, it's.
So I, I, I know, but I, I understand, but like I say, we're.
No, I think it's.
What philosophical question?
I have to answer it a little bit here, so I think part of what you have to look at is, you know, we're constantly trying to improve teaching and learning, right? And so we want to give our, our teachers and our students the best resources to be able to do that, you know? So I really see it as resource for that. We want to identify that you put in these Chromebooks and you're going to see this? And academically, no, I think we want to evaluate our teaching and learning practices. And then do we give them the resources to implement all the things they want? When we've met with teachers and talked to teachers about what they need, that access point is what continues to stick out, that students don't have appropriate access. They still have to get to labs, they still have to check out carts too often to do the things they want to do to be able to provide high levels of instruction. So for me, this is a way just to leverage more instructional capacity for a resource teacher we're asking, so they can do those best practices better in their classrooms.
Will the answer, yes?
I, I, I know I wouldn't say it's not yes. I think the yes is to our, our teaching and learning practices, it's not to putting Chromebooks.
That's another neighbor, but isn't the answer yes?
I think it allows you to do teaching and learning better, so if you want to extrapolate that to yes, then.
We should be able to look at districts that have gone and see that they've had improved scores, they should be beating us.
Yeah, I mean, one of that.
Well, do we look for improved scores based on, you know, another?
New textbooks, adding hardware to the chemistry classroom.
Trying to help you, you know, so I think that's.
I'm sure you've spent some research, though.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, you know, much of my research over the past number of years that I've been in my PhD program has been focused on the impact of technology initiatives and successful, successful technology initiatives. And this is the answer people usually don't like to hear, but it's incredibly difficult to tease out the test score impact, for instance, of any one program because no school is running this one program, you know, we're doing so many things, that's very difficult. There are things that the research shows are direct impacts of one-to-one programs. Student engagement actually is usually heightened within one-to-one environments. Attendance tends to go up within one-to-one environments. There are other factors that.
Well, if attendance goes up, then academic performance goes up.
Well, and so again, you can extrapolate, but the research, the, the research doesn't jump to that conclusion. But at the same time, to me, I think the really critical part is this access piece, that we know that one-to-one provides the opportunity to do things that right now we cannot do. And I don't think, you know, I've spent a lot of time in working in and observing one-to-one environments.
Tool doesn't change the performance.
Situation where students are just buried in the device, you know, with good teaching, like doing a one-to-one environment. You can facilitate even much deeper interaction in classrooms where, you know, a teacher is engaging students and students are talking and, you know, part of the debate. And meanwhile, students are participating in a live running chat that's being projected at the front of the room. So they're commenting, you know, when others are talking about what's being discussed and that sort of thing. And it creates, you know, if anything, further engagement that's enabled by the technology. So I think there are a lot of arguments for one-to-one, but I can't say that it will yield an increase.
Miracles.
But there's no way the data will ever show you anything, plus you have to compare it to what you could do otherwise with that one?
I could share a real quick perspective, my kids have both been in a district where they've had one-to-one for quite some time. And, you know, I at first too, as a rule, it's a beginning, you hope you're going to see that student achievement result. We have to go back to, it's really there to help leverage that content in a more efficient, effective way. I would say that most districts would probably come back to you and say, from the administrator's standpoint and the teachers as well, is that you're going to have varying levels of implementation. You're going to have those early adopters that are already using it in their classrooms that go to town with it. You're going to have some staff watching them and they'll, they'll come right along with the others. You're going to have some that sit back and say, I've got to do this, this is new, I haven't had to do teaching and learning this way ever. But I think the thing that has struck me most with my own kids is watching them operate from home on a sick day or at nighttime, much like I operate every day when I go to work. And not all of their jobs someday are going to require that use of the computer, but it is quite amazing to see them doing what they do, whether it's through email, getting on Google Classroom, getting their assignments. And some of that stuff, of course, is happening already now without the one-to-one. But it is simply amazing to watch them operate in a world that if they didn't have access to computers, seven hours of their day is shut down from that. And so to me, it's that tool of the pencil or the feather pen that wasn't there, you know, many moons ago, and so I just spend.
So privacy part still kind of makes me wonder, is there going to be, this goes beyond just the Chromebooks, but are we notifying parents in various ways in which their students' data is shared? With other companies, et cetera?
Um, we actually did send an email to district parents, I mean, maybe in September-ish, September, October, that went out and informed parents about all the accounts that we create for students, what information we send where. I don't know if it was comprehensive list of everywhere we sent information because it didn't include federal, you know, government, that sort of thing. But, but it does list all of the accounts that we create for students, information about how to contact us for more, you know, information or questions or concerns.
I'm wondering what the standard testing, you know.
Adam can probably talk to this a lot more intelligently than I can, but I think part of our barometer is those, those systems like Power School, student information systems that house a lot of that sensitive student data and how they talk to any technology resource that we would have them communicate with. That's where we're very sensitive about what is that other company's security protocols, preferences, processes that link to pulling any of that information. So they have a standard from the technology department they work through to make sure that any group that would communicate to Power School with that sensitive piece, you know, meets that minimum standard and is guaranteeing, you know, some privacy on our end, that we're not having a discomfort level. I think there was even a, a concern as we worked through that district mobile app last year, you know, what are they pulling from our student information database that, you know, if they're going to pull it to an app, are we comfortable with those, that app's security preferences, you know, for our parents to be able to look at? The phone is nice, but we want to make sure whatever companies deploying that app has met that same level of security that Power School has. And so I think those are things we work through, Chris, as, as those concerns come up, because we, we definitely don't want a situation where that information's being shared and we're not knowledgeable about it, or parents aren't knowledgeable about it.
It'd be nice if it was in one place, people could see, you know, this, all that.
Data's all over the place, though, that's.
That's very hard for someone to figure out, even for us to know when we're doing something, whether data is a picture.
And on these, on these guidelines and everything, you said you were taking stuff from other districts. Is it possible to look at other districts' plan, you know, what Bankany may have, or what ones wouldn't have as far as their technology, what we call?
Um, yeah, we've done a lot of that already.
Okay, well, I mean, if you can just provide links for us on.
Certainly, yeah.
To, to, you don't have to go any further than that, just so we can kind of go through and just see how other people tackle some of the things we've had in here.
All right, Adam, great job, man. Awesome, very exciting. I, I walked away thinking that's going to be a huge improvement, so that's just me, though. All right, any else on this one? Cell phone policies, so what do we want to get out of this topic? Who wants this topic?
I do.
Can we frame it, so what are we trying to get out of it?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a discussion, I guess, it's maybe to see what the, you know, administrations' thoughts are or getting everyone on the same page. I guess I've had a couple of concerns with usage and where it's controlled, not controlled, I guess. And some problems that it may have created with some students. For example, I know it's, I'm more familiar with the Southeast policy, I guess, because my kids are there now. You know, the red and the green zones, green zones are okay to use it when teachers say it's okay to use it, red zones, you should absolutely not have your phone. And I, and I guess the gray area for me, or the trouble area, is the locker rooms slash restrooms, especially the locker room. And a, and a good example, I just finished my first year as a volunteer coach for girls' basketball this past season. And there was, at the seventh grade level, there were three of us and we were all male coaches. So there would be no, we were not in the locker room to observe anything that happened before or after practice. Where there could have been some concern with people taking pictures or doing Snapchat live videos, you know, in the locker room. And there's no cameras in there and you can't legally jam phones. So I guess my concern is what's the expectation from the administration or the issues we've had? Or what can we do to prevent things like that from happening?
Yeah, I've heard the same things brought up, and it's, it's not so much the policy, it's the enforcement. People are wondering about whether it's the same everywhere, especially in the locker room. I mean, should we have kids just actually deposit their phones on their way in or what? Because once, I mean, yeah, there's nobody in there. And, you know, if anything happens, like kids out there on the internet, there's no taking it back.
And there's really multiple issues with it because it's, it's curricular during school when kids are in there. It's extra and co-curricular after hours when they're in there. And it's the general public that's in our facilities, both during the day and after hours, that are in those facilities.
The other thing, I guess, along that line, and you guys can touch on more when I've done here, but going back to my, my day at Southeast, just a couple of other interesting things, I think, you know, it's, it's, I guess naive not to think that the phones are there all the time. And, and to be quite honest, even the one class that I did get to go with my daughter, she had her phone sitting out on the table. And the teacher told them, put their phones away, and I was behind her, all she did was put it on her lap. And then the teacher said, you know, you're either going to put it away or you're going to bring it up here. So, I mean, it is a distraction, I think, or, you know, something teachers are dealing with. And one other just, you know, side note, I guess, is at one point I did leave a class in there, I went to the restroom and, you know, standing in the restroom was a kid that's in there playing this, playing a game. So, I mean, you can't control what they're going to do in there, but I think there's maybe some issues.
It's a nice, bad day.
What's that?
It's a nice, bad day.
It was a good day, it was a really good day, actually. So I guess I just want to hear more, I looked at the policies that are on, that you guys gave us, and they may, you know, barrier how they're enforced, so.
So recommendations or next steps?
Well, I think uniformity of the policy is the first place to start.
That's.
I would just say.
I was just thinking, you know, substitute and have to have a cheat sheet. Oh, I'm at Southeast, oh my god, is this your first, second, third or fourth event?
Right. So the only thing I'm going to, we're working on. So the only thing I'm going to, we're working on that, okay? So I can let you know that as part of our work as a secondary administrative team is that our policies are, they do vary greatly. The one part that I'm trying to respect, the pushback I'm getting from the principals a little bit is they have some effective things going because they struggle with this on a daily basis. I mean, from your example there, imagine how many of those issues end up in the office one way or another or teachers communicating with principals. So some of the things they've done independently have worked and so it's hard to, I don't want to upset their apple cart by trying to get a consistent policy too specific. So there's pieces of these that they look very different now. I think we can bring back some consistency and that's part of the work we're engaged in right now in our team meetings, so.
Just saying with hard points and soft points, right?
Yeah, exactly. That's what we're doing. Yep.
Yeah, and there may be flexibility in that.
Here's the things we want to be consistent on, like an easy one's locker room, restroom usage, right? I mean, we can be pretty black and white on what that looks like and we can be consistent throughout. Now how we speak about, you know, green zones, red zones, or teachers process for telling kids to secure phones, you know, I mean, we have different processes in place, you know, that have had either success or we've struggled with. Yeah, so we can bring some back when we have that. We're looking at it more from even our student handbook perspective and cellphones as a piece of that. So that's some of the work we're working through this year.
Also the practices about how it's enforced, it'd be nice if we had more specifics.
Teachers and stuff, though.
Yeah. Well, and then the range of the problem with how it's enforced or what's enforced, I mean, speaking to technology concerns, I mean, there are all mini computers, right? So we can have a range of, I was looking at a message from my parent to some, you know, very egregious behavior on the phone.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I mean, that's where I can give you a situation A through Z and to say we have a specific way that all of those things are dealt with, they could vary very greatly depending on the severity of that, so.
But we've allowed this in and it doesn't have, I mean, let's be realistic, it doesn't have to be in there. Kids using cellphones for calculators, you can get a calculator for a block.
They're coming to.
What?
The phones are coming to school. We're not expecting.
Well, but no, we've got secretaries that take messages and everything like that. We, no, that part of it has been allowed into the bill. And I think it gets into the broader, I think it gets also into the discussion just on what's the expectation in school? Because until you go into the workforce, they're not going to allow you just to grab your phone every time and go. At some places we'll allow it, some places won't. And you've got to, you know, it's, like I say, we've allowed it to encroach in and, you know, is it becoming more of a distraction than a help? Should mom and dad call the office and then they send the messages, you know, between class like that? Some of the schools are doing that type of contact. I think the dinosaur throwing this stuff out.
I mean, it's all choice. All choice.
Right. But.
We've done it both ways in our work, you know, zero cellphones on the floor to, you're allowed, you know, have them, but.
I think you, you know, the problem, I think we hung on to black and white cellphone policies in public education about as long as you could, trying to say no use. And what we ended up with was huge power struggles with kids turning into very negative events that started with a turnover of your cellphone. So I think there was some evolution to that. There was also the teaching and learning component, like you're saying, Phil, you know, have we went too far in the sense of thinking it was a help or that we could leverage it as a component? And that's why I almost like to look at these two things together because I think things you'd also hear from other schools is when you had students engaged with a screen in a productive way, the problems with these go down dramatically as well. So, yeah, I mean, you kind of have one of these go on. And so I would like us to see that too in a year or two after we have some consistency on our policy and we also have the device initiative implemented, what has happened with our cellphones. So there's some very real things with kids and screens right now that to try to reset that expectation, I think, would cause us a whole host of issues.
I totally, I'm not at all saying zero tolerance of cellphones, but I do have two daughters at Southeast that want to say hi and they're in the locker rooms. You know, that part worries me. So to get some reassurance that I can be sure that no one is in there with a camera.
And bathrooms.
Would be a nice thing. Yeah, bathrooms, too.
In the locker rooms, we've tried a lot harder on your scenarios here. It's obviously a loophole for us, but to try to make sure we have an adult in those locker rooms when kids are in there. We know that there's times we miss that and that's something we continue to try. Bathroom's are the harder one, right? I mean, that's, we don't, can't staff a staff member in bathrooms all the time, but, you know, we do have staff to go through, you know, if they see some of that use. We try to do education of those spots, you know, to say it's inappropriate not to be using them in those, but we still end up with issues.
So do we want to start this with P and G, do we?
I'd, I guess, could I recommend that you let us work on it some more and then bring you something to P and G?
Yeah, he said bring P and G.
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready to bring, wherever you got that.
We can bring you something later this spring when we've dug into it some more, so.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Integrated pest management, we did. Grounds care, we're going to move to March. Maintain moisture. C. Salute. All fair say hi. Point imposed. Spinning chair.
Back to the table.
No, we're into it.